Okay, we'll call the City Council Workshop to order July 10th, Monday, 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Uh, Michelle Addo.
David Paradise.
Kirby Moyno.
Sam Solars.
Nicole Andreas.
Steve Gritman.
Jared Vogi.
Jessica Bonniewell.
A proposal from J.P. Brooks for preserved property.
I think maybe we'll have Steve go over his comparison a bit since the developers are not present at the meeting at this time, and if they don't come, we will just adjourn, so.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, what I prepared here was really just a summary of the two, so you had a way of comparing the two options in front of you. They are relatively similar in unit count. The Brooks project proposes 174 units, which is the way the preserve has been originally plotted. The Briggs project is a little less than that, 164 units. Where they differ in land use and character is the unit styles. Brooks is pretty consistently a series of townhouses, different building sizes, but anywhere from two to eight-unit buildings, almost right on the way the project was originally plotted. And the Briggs project, on the other hand, includes two 45-unit apartment buildings. They lay out as kind of a phased idea, as well as 48, or 44, what they call tiny homes. They didn't really provide a whole lot of detail about how tiny those tiny homes are, but they would be clustered in different unit clusters, and then 30 units of six-to-eight unit back-to-back townhouse clusters, similar to the original preserve project. There's, in the Briggs project, there's still a couple of parcels that are undesignated, so probably some areas that need to be fleshed out a little bit from a land use standpoint. Briggs, on the unit styles, patio homes would be a possibility in lieu of those tiny houses. They said they were just going to kind of test the market, is the way they laid those out. The, it'd kind of be convertible on the plat design that they've identified. And the project that includes the apartment units are basically studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units in the two apartment buildings that is shown in the Briggs project. The applicant talks about organizations such as an HOA or other management organization that would manage the common elements, and the tiny houses do not include covered garage. The patio homes would include a garage, so it's kind of a little bit of a difference there, depending on which way that project would proceed if you were to approve it, and we'd have to deal with kind of the different amenity aspects of that project. The Brooks project, again, a little more conventional townhouse design, a couple of two-car, two-car garages basically incorporated into the unit design, regardless really of whether they're two or eight-unit buildings. Each of the units have kind of a tuck under, a two-car garage. The applicant talks about that there would be an HOA for common maintenance, so kind of presuming here that these would be primarily for sale units, and they would manage common elements in private streets within the development. The main north-south street would retain, remain a public street, and I'm pretty sure that is the intent of both developers. Infrastructure, Brooks talks about having a little more detail about the needs that they've found there. They appear, at least the way they've presented this, to have done maybe a little more investigation into the existing situation, expecting that they're going to have to replace quite a bit of it, in particular, the streets and curbs and gutters, but utilities as needed. Briggs doesn't really detail their infrastructure plan. It would obviously be required to build infrastructure up to city standards, but really doesn't get addressed in much detail in that project proposal. They both are talking about initial, at least approvals in 2023, construction 24. Brooks suggests that they would be underway with some infrastructure development in 23. And Brooks specifies that they would be looking for TIF. Briggs does not talk about his finance plan, so he doesn't say he's not going to look for TIF, but that would be something that would need to be investigated there. And then, talk a little bit about other elements that the developers proposed. The Briggs project talks about some fishing pond features in the open space, a controlled-access dock in that space, and Brooke talks about expectation of constructing park enhancements and other open space preservation. So those public or privately-owned park and open space aspects are both part of the projects that you have before you, differing a little bit, and probably not very well fleshed out at this point, obviously, but subject to your ongoing review. Briggs would require a new plat, and the Brooks project would probably follow the existing plat the way they've laid it out, so there would be a little more planning and zoning review process for the Briggs project, since the apartments would need a replat, and part of the other aspect of it could as well. You would need to consider your financing approvals, your development agreements for both parties, and all of that would be pretty much in the normal course of development review. So, that's a brief overview, and if you've got comments or questions, I'd be happy to talk about those, but we have some people in the audience now.
If anybody from the developers would like to come up and talk, I do have your PowerPoint. If you have anything else digital, we can plug that in as well.
Yeah, Art just in the classroom, and he's gonna, we all went to City Hall.
I was wondering, I texted, yeah, the people at City Hall to make sure.
He did confirm there's no high keys under the doormat.
Do you need a podium?
I think he probably will. You have Art.
Good evening. I'm Art.
And this is Art Plant?
Art Plant.
Plant.
Art Plant with J.P. Brooks. Good evening, everybody. Sorry for our tardiness. We were confused with City Hall and Community Center. Apologize. I'm here with Josh Palmerloo, the owner of J.P. Brooks, Ashley De La Sando, our project manager, here to answer any of your questions. Thank you, Mr. Gritman, for your introduction. How would you like to proceed? How can we use the council's time most efficiently tonight? We can answer questions, we can walk through the program, however you guys would like us to do it.
I think we should just kind of walk through it, and then we'll, if we have questions come up.
Okay.
Do you care if we interrupt if we have questions that pop up?
Nope. No, that'd be fine. I'm used to being interrupted, especially at home. Okay, so our presentation is, as Mr. Gritman said, we're trying to incorporate the original vision into the extension and the continuation of this project as it was originally intended. Obviously, the plat's been approved and recorded. Much of the infrastructure's been installed, maybe not vetted and tested, but we intend to go through all of that process. Our product is going to take 174 homes, home sites, which is what it's been plotted, 474 units. Our footprint is essentially the right fit for lots as they have been plotted, and our goal was to really try to be as most efficient as possible without changing the entire concept of the design and the original subdivision plan. We say that for a couple of reasons. One, for the efficiency of the land use and the cost to finish the improvements, and secondly, because we believe this is a product that is in need in your city. And that's clearly stated in your comprehensive plan, where you're looking for affordable product, a product that's easy to maintain, so those will be association maintained, geared to the empty, or I'm sorry, the entry-level buyer, people who are just starting out in their housing. So young families, could be singles, could be older folks, although they probably wouldn't be inclined to like the stairs, but we see this as a first-time buyer product. Your comp plan calls out a need for that, and it's really the way many of us have started in our own housing ventures, something affordable, something easy to maintain, we don't have a big yard, you know, we might not have any kids yet, and that's where we see the market and the buyer profile. It needs to be affordable, so we're attempting to come up with a product that we think will use the site efficiently and also cost the least amount to produce. In terms of the project history, you all know the history, so I don't think I need to go through that. A little bit about us, as a builder, we've been in business for 10 years. We started in 2013. Josh is the founder here, and he started as a Realtor, professional Realtor, and has been in the, we also have a real estate company, so we have dozens of agents that sell homes throughout the Twin Cities, including our own products. We've built over 600 homes in 40 different communities since our beginning in 2013. Currently, we're building in 14 locations throughout the metro. A few of them fairly close to here, we're building in Buffalo. We're just getting started in Delano. Hanover is a big location for us, but primarily focused on the western and northern suburbs. We expect to do about 160 or so closings. We did about 175 last year. We expect to do close to that this year, maybe a little less because of the rising interest rates and this little bit of a slowdown in the market, but we expect to continue our march to be a top-10 builder. We were number 10 last year, and we're Minnesota Green Path certified, so that means everything that we build is energy-efficient, so what does that mean to the customer? It means their energy bills and their cost of ownership will be less than a typical home. In terms of the development itself, it's rough. As everybody knows, it's overgrown. There is a lot of infrastructure there. We intend to test it, check it. We did some of that work about two years ago, prior to my being with J.P. Brooks, so we have a pretty good understanding of what we're dealing with. I've talked to Mr. Knoss, the city engineer, so I have a pretty good sense of what we're up against in terms of the infrastructure. We know we need to bore under Highway 12, so that's a big cost item. We also know we need to put in a right-turn lane on Highway 12, that's another big ticket cost item. So all in all, and this is not in the program, but we expect to spend a little over $2.4 million between the purchase price of the land that we're proposing and then all of the improvements to get to finished lots and streets and a buildable development. We've proposed some terms in the outline in terms of a purchase and how that might work, and these mirror our typical land acquisition standards. Typically, a developer would encumber the property, have a right to purchase it, and then go through what we call due diligence. So during the due diligence phase, we're going to check the soils, we're going to check all the underground infrastructure, we're going to bid it out, we're going to do everything we can to understand the costs and bear those costs out, and we've asked for 90 days to do that. And then, once that 90 days is passed, assuming we move forward, then the earnest money, which we've proposed $10,000 of the $75,000 offer price, would be firm, and it would be binding, and we would be required to perch, you know, to go forward with the purchase and the closing. We've also asked for, as some of the contingencies, to just validate that all the connection fees have been paid, that's our understanding, so typically, on a new development, a developer would pay for water, sanitary, and storm trunk charges. We understand those to be paid, so we just want to validate that, and then all park dedication fees have been satisfied. Of course, all of those proffers would be written into a developer agreement, just like you would do in any new subdivision, if we were starting from a farm field, and that's a contract between us and the city, and I'm sure you're familiar with that documentation. So we'd want to see what that looks like and make sure that all the language in there is satisfactory and covers all of the nuances and ins and outs of developer requirements. And then finally, the big ask is, we believe that this development, for a number of reasons, is going to require a TIF financing district. And the reason I say that is, when we run our numbers, that $2-point-something million dollars to improve the site, and then we add the cost of the sticks and bricks and the overhead and the expenses and the operating costs, the project, at the pricing that we need to be positioned, which is around $262,000, we can't make any profit. So at that number, where we think we need to be positioned for that home to be affordable, to be right-priced for that entry-level buyer that I talked about, we think we need to be well under $300,000 because of today's interest rates, because buyers can afford less home than they could a year ago, right? Rates are much higher, and the Fed's indicating that they're going to go up some more. So, once we start the project, we want to make sure we don't stall out and that we have good momentum and energy and sales that propels us through the build process, because the last thing we want to do is start it, not get our sales, have it stall out, and then people think it's tainted, and then we aren't able to sell. So nobody wants that, that's not a good situation. So, how do we make the numbers work for us to make it worthwhile for you? Well, we need some help, and the TIF district is the way we think we could achieve that. So, happy to provide more information about that as we go through and answer any questions. In terms of the product, it's a slab-on-grade townhome, so I'm on page five, thank you for getting me there. 174 homes, two different floor plans, an end unit and an interior unit. End unit, basically, is similar floor plan, but has a few more windows, right, because you've got the end condition. And then we have some buildings that are what we call front-to-back, so you have a couple of buildings on the pond and over up at the top corner, and then a few detached buildings on the southern end that are, you know, what we would call a traditional row-style townhome. So that home has windows on two or three sides. There is, we would propose to have different color palettes with stone accents in the front, so they look attractive, and they're not the same building row after row, right, because you've got a lot of row buildings. So how do we make that look attractive? Well, we mix up the color schemes and vary the stone, so that we have what we call anti-monotony, so that means we don't want to have the same repeat. All the buildings will be slab-on-grade foundations with two-car garages and two of those, and two additional parking spots on the driveway, so essentially, each home can accommodate four vehicles. Now, you'd think that would be enough, but we know people have friends, and they bring family over for events and so forth, so in addition to the standard four per unit, we have 87 guest parking stalls throughout the project, which is very generous for a project of this size, almost one-half stall per home extra. It will also be HOA-maintained, so that would be snow, grass, exterior maintenance of the building, and insurance of the building, so of course, there'll be monthly dues for that, but this is a lock-and-go situation. Homeowners can come home, not have to worry about doing any maintenance, and they can go, they can travel, and not have to worry about things being taken care of on the exterior of their home. All the open space, which is pretty much the wetland and the future park area at the south, and potentially, any open space around buildings, would all be dedicated to this association that we would create, and it would also, those areas would also be maintained by the HOA. On to page six, I've covered quite a bit of this already, but essentially, we would, you know, finish the development, check everything, remove all the trees, clear the site, remove all the existing curb and gutter and street pavement, which is pretty much failing, and then finish the water-sanitary sewer, bore under Highway 12, make sure it's all operational, and then pave probably a portion of the project, so that all those dollars aren't sitting out there over future years. And then we would do a second phase, probably a year or two after, depending on how our absorptions go, and pave the rest of the development. And then finally, one of the things that we think is a nice enhancement to the overall community, and why people might want to live there, is we'll have a self-contained park, which is your program page seven, and we would pay for these improvements. We estimate that could be as much as $100,000, but a nice park site where people could bring their kids, their dogs, their families, invite their friends, and have everything really contained, so they don't have to cross 12, they don't have to drive somewhere, and they're more inclined to walk and use this as an amenity. So, we would pay for, as part of this development, those improvements. The floor plans are contained within. We have built a similar product before, but this is a Biggie-sized version of the product. What I would say about a back-to-back-style townhome, I've been building in the Twin Cities for almost 27 years, I've built thousands of these homes there, the perfect entry-level, best-value construction, therefore, the best price to the consumer, and a great entry way to get out of an apartment, own your own home. So the bulk of the homes in the development are this back-to-back style, and then, as I mentioned, we have a lesser amount of the row-style townhomes, which we think will sell for slightly more, because, right, there's nobody back next to you, you might have an end-home condition, and you might be on a wetland or on a nice view, so we think we can get paid a little bit more money for those homes. So 1,700 to 1,725 or so is the square footage. All the floor plans are contained within your brochure, so three to four bedrooms, that's kind of hard to do in 1,700 square feet, but that's what makes this product efficient and makes it the best value for new housing. So finally, my final points are really some of the points that are articulated in your comp plan, and those are to provide quality housing that's affordable to all income levels and all stages of life. We think we'll get more entry-level folks, maybe not so many folks that want no stairs and are at the end of their life cycle, but we might get a few of those, they have good legs. It'll provide a diversity of housing style and sought-after price point, which is clearly needed here, throughout the metro for that matter. Affordable housing is the hot topic today, you know, with rising rates and rising costs, how do we get the, you know, the home price to be affordable enough where people can pay for it and buy it, instead of paying for rent? It'll be well-maintained, so the structure of the homeowners' association will ensure that the buildings look good over time. Part of the monthly dues are reserves that go towards long-term replacements of roofs and sightings and paint, streets, landscaping, all of those sorts of improvements, so there will be a self-funding mechanism in place via the HOA. So it's going to look good, whereas some single-family neighborhoods without those provisions kind of, you know, you don't have a lot of control over what each homeowner's going to do. So with an association and a board of directors, there's a little more assurance that the vision that we started with is going to be there 10, 20, 30 years down the road. And finally, the location of the property is clearly within your service area. I mean, the lift station's literally on the southern end of the property, so doesn't it make sense to use your current service area and your current infrastructure, which is already in the ground, and take use of that versus going out and blowing up another farm field for another new development? So those are my points. I'm here to answer questions. Josh, the owner of J.P. Brooks, is here to answer questions. I think he was here and talked to you folks a couple of years ago, so fire away. Well, we want to average around $262.5. That's our goal, so we'd have some homes that are a little less than that, some homes that are a little more than that, and that number includes options. So we, our base price would be in the mid 250, you know, 255 or so, and we expected this product to sell maybe 8,000 in average upgrades, so carpet, flooring, countertops, plumbing, those kind of things that people can personalize their home with. And we think that's the number where we can get close to three sales a month. That's our goal, is to try to be at about three sales a month, 36 homes a year, maybe not in year one, because we may not have a full year, but once we're really open, have a full model presence, we want to get to three sales a month. And even at that, it's going to take, you know, five years to burn through the development.
For the TIF district, I'm assuming you're looking for like an affordable housing TIF district?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that meets income levels.
To comply with all those rules and everything, and then how long were you looking to have that active for?
Well, we know the maximum, I believe, is 26 years. We're certainly interested in talking about something that's less than that. You know, the challenge in the couple first few years is obviously there is not much tax base being accumulated towards the TIF, but we're certainly willing to discuss and be open to something less than 26 years. You know, we're motivated to get through the project at the pace that I mentioned, 36 homes a year, so a district that at least covers us for those startup years, where things tend to start a little bit slower while we're developing, while we're building our models, we don't usually get too many sales.
How do you see the phases rolling out?
We would, we would obviously...
How do you see the phases rolling out?
We would start at the, obviously, right up at 12, and probably do, you know, come into maybe this point, and maybe part of this, and pave all of that, and then potentially this, you know, the balance could be the second phase. Obviously, we don't want to put more pavement and infrastructure in and have the weather eat at it for a year or two before we can even build on it, so we could potentially even phase it in three phases. We're open to figure out those details, but we have to kind of work our way from the front to the back, because that's where the connections are going to be most readily available.
You said you'd be looking at about 36 a year?
That's our goal. If we can hit that $262 price point, that's what we think we can achieve. Of course, you never, there's never a guarantee in our business. I wish there were, I'd have a lot less gray hair, more hair, but that's our goal, that's where we think we can get that sort of pace, but, you know, you never really know until you open your models and people are coming through and deciding to purchase. Those kind of paces have been achieved, and considerably more than that, for an affordable product in my 26 years in the Twin Cities with this type of product. I've seen much higher sales paces when, you know, pre-recession, and we probably would have been able to exceed that even a year or two ago, when interest rates were 3.25%, 3.5%, but now, when they're double that, that's going to knock a few folks out of the game in terms of their ability to qualify.
Do you do a lot of HOA management stuff?
More than I want to remember. Yeah, I'm actually the president of five, I think, HOAs right now. It's the job everybody hates, but you got to do it, right? So I feel like I'm doing my civic duty every day by being on the boards, or I'm actually the president of all of the associations that we create at J.P. Brooks. Prior to J.P. Brooks, I owned my own company, and I was the president of all of those associations as well, and my public builder days, the 14 prior years, you know, we set, just about every community we did was association-maintained. I built over 4,000. I built over 4,000 townhomes and condominiums in the Twin Cities as a public builder. And so every, virtually everyone was association. So we've got the documents down pretty good. We've got professional management companies that help us with that, you know, hand-holding to, with the consumer. And as we build through, there's always questions about how things are supposed to work. So I think we do a darn good job in setting expectations upfront with the customer, what they're buying into, what's being provided and what's not being provided, what it's going to cost, who their contacts are with their management company. So unlike a lot of smaller developers, we do things on a big scale and a professional level for association management.
Looking at the plan, obviously, a lot of development of roads out here. We have had issues in the past where houses are built and roads aren't completed.
Yep.
Is that, you know, kind of a guarantee that the roads are going to be done before the houses are finished off and sold to individuals so we don't have to hear those issues also just the fire department or, you know, sheriff's department trying to get out there as well?
Yeah, yeah. Excellent question. I'll take that in two parts. So as a developer, when we put in street infrastructure, we do it in two steps. First step is to put in the curb and gutter and do what we call the base cores. That's typically one and a half, two and a half inches of asphalt. Then you build the houses because we get truck traffic and excavating machines and people who don't think things through and it gets damaged. So we fix all, so once the homes are built in those particular streets, we, then we fix all the damage, cracked curb, broken curb, whatever it is. And then we put what we call the final wear course. That's when the street is completed. How is the city assured that that's going to happen? Two mechanisms. One, there is the contract. There's the developer agreement. That's the contract we sign with you that says we're going to do all this stuff. Second is it's secured by a letter of credit from a bank. Our bank will give the city a letter of credit. So that letter of credit stays out there until we've completed all of our obligations. That's your assured, your surety, I should say, that we're going to do what we say we're going to do.
And all these roads, there would be no street parking, right?
Um...
Your fire department?
I'm not certain about...
Brought that...
Depending on, yeah, how wide it is.
But I would, my guess is probably not. I don't believe, I just drove through there a minute ago. I don't believe that it's wide enough for street parking. We got, and we're going to have plenty of gas parking, so the intent is...
Yeah, I was just curious. He'd brought the fire department and the sheriff's department, so I just wanted to make sure that they would be able to get down the roads in an event of emergency, so...
Yeah. What I've seen happen in, and it's, every city is sometimes a little bit different, but some cities like the private streets, which are, you know, these narrower streets, some cities like those to be noted as fire lanes, and some even go as far as to have the curb painted red or yellow. I don't think that's the most attractive, but that really sends the message to everybody that, hey, this is a fire lane, you can't park here. You can also do that with just signage. So we'll have to work through those details with the city engineer and figure out what's best for this location and what you guys are...
Saying you don't like big red or yellow curbs in front of your gray houses?
Yeah, just saying. I lived in one of those, and they look great when they're first painted, but five years later, 10 years later, they don't look so great. And as long, you know, if the HOA is maintaining them, great, you know, they'll, they can keep looking good. But when they start to peel, they don't always look so good.
How far offset do you see Apple Lane from Highway 12?
I don't know what the setback is on that and whether there'll be, I know we have to do a right turn lane, which I believe would be on the left, on the west side of Willow, but I don't know that exact distance without looking at the plans.
Would you see keeping somewhat of that berm there to block some of the highway noise or would you see that being open?
Well, if there is a berm there, we'd obviously want to preserve that. If there isn't a berm there, we would have to bring in material to build one, but I just, I don't have my, you know, in my, in my head what that looks like today. Obviously, there's a value in having berming and landscaping there for the consumer that chooses that location. Everybody wants to have some privacy and doesn't want to see highway traffic, right? So that would make logical sense. So if there is a berm, we'll make, we'll take advantage of it and use it and landscape it.
There is a pretty significant berm there, so we would take advantage of that. I mean, unless the city engineer has one of them.
Right. Those are the kind of details we'll work through. I mean, the plans were approved, but we'll want to go back through those with our contractors and the city engineer and make sure we've ticked and tied all of those sorts of details. That would be true on the left side of, the west side of Willow as well, that one building that sides 212. We'd want to make sure that's bermed and protected there, too.
Do you have any questions? No? I don't have any more questions.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much for coming in and presenting this to council today.
Appreciate it.
And like I said, the next step is just going to be kind of them doing the decision-making progress, process, and then hopefully August we'll be making a decision about this. Oh, do we know more?
Okay. Terrific. We're motivated to do the project. We're also motivated to try to get it in this year, just for the council's thinking. Timing is everything in the development business. When we start getting into fall and the weather closes in on us, it gets incredibly challenging to get contractors to jump. And then, you know, if we miss a season, so our goal is to try to have models by spring, which is still going to be very, very tight, but if we can get a jump on that this season, that would be helpful. Thank you very much, and we apologize again for being tardy.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to discuss this a little now or should we take a recess until the next one arrives?
He was here during this.
I'm fine going right to Pat Briggs.
If you're ready for Pat Briggs, we can jump right in. We don't have to wait until six if you're here and ready.
Thank you for, thank you for giving us the opportunity this evening to go through our project with you and really, very unique opportunity. Maybe just some background on myself. I've spent about 35 years in real estate and about 30 years in multifamily. And multifamily would be in the purchase as well as the residential rental arena. And I just moved over to Wright County about two years ago from Sherburne County, so now I live in Annandale. And so I've been looking for some projects close to home that, that I would enjoy being a part of. And what really attracted me to this project was the challenge, number one. I thought that was interesting. I've taken over bankrupt projects before and vacant buildings, et cetera. And so this one was kind of unique in my, in my mind as I was considering what project I would be interested in working on here in 2024. And I think, based on the location, I think we have a very unique opportunity to bring to the community. And it seems like today, you know, our focus is trying to get the youth connected. And so our focus is primarily really going to center around a fishing pond. That's what this community is really about, is about connecting all of the members of our community. And so in the park area, towards the south of the property, that's where our fishing pond would be located. And then, of course, all the different amenities right down there in the blue and the other amenities that would go with the park, you know, playground sets and Bean Bay games, et cetera. So that, that's the focal point of, of our purpose with this type of product, this environment. And so with that being said, you know, we're in some changing times right now. And, and so our proposal is to be a little more diverse, to be able to shift and move with the market as it unfolds in front of our eyes during the next 36 months, you know, 60 months. So the very first thing we would start with would be the two multifamily apartment buildings right here, these two 45 units. We'd start with those. You know, if I said this fall, I would be right. So realistically, it would be a spring project. We would, if the stars aligned and we could start digging, we would do that, but realistically, it would be a spring project where we'd start digging. And it would take us about 12 months to get the first building up and, you know, 18 months total, another six months to get the second building up, so. Spent a lot of time in the community and spoke to a few different employers in the community. And I've learned how underserved this area is for rental. And I think, you know, five years ago, I would have leaned more towards the townhome concept, and I don't think it's necessarily a bad concept, but I just prefer this one based on the uncertainty as we progress in this demographic. So what that provides is it would provide us with, in the beginning, approximately 90 units, which would be studios, a mix between studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and a few three bedrooms. And then, at the same time, we would start one of our concepts of a tiny home project, which would be probably right here, something right along here. And then we would do a twin home at the same time. And from there, we would make the decision as we proceeded forward, you know, if we would have an excess amount of tiny homes or patio homes. Tiny homes, the definition, because everybody's thinking the word tiny home, what does that mean, you know? Tiny home means less square footage. And I'll kind of go extreme, called a micro apartment. I bought a building in Elk River called The American, former hotel, and it was vacant. And I converted those to studios. And if you could imagine, 250 square feet. I mean, who'd ever think you could, you know, make space like that and be functional? And we did it, and it was really a very, very successful project. So when I think of a tiny home, I think of something new, nice, clean, but about 600 to 700 square feet. But the design and the elements of the design are what would be extremely unique and just very functional. So the tiny home concept gives somebody an opportunity to have a brand-new place and have it be affordable, whether you would purchase it or rent it, either or. So that's the tiny home concept. And then I've got a lot A, a lot A, and a whole lot B left over. So currently, the way the plan's laid out, we're approximately 190 units, I want to say, 170 of them somewhere right in that, 90 of 30 and 70, 160 somewhere right there. Plus, you know, another 40 units here, 40 or 45 units here, and then plus up here. Retail, could be light industrial, could even be multifamily. So there could be potential for another, you know, 90 units in addition to what we currently have, if that's what the market would, would serve us for as we progress in the future. But I, what's interesting to me is in the multifamily sector, how many seniors actually become clients of ours in our apartment building, a market-rate building? And so we build them to be handicap-accessible as well, all ADA-compliant shower bars, shower bars in the showers and ADA door openers and all of the common areas and, and so, yeah, that's pretty much kind of the nuts and bolts of it. I don't want to go into the previous details about the site, et cetera, that, that Brooks' Art shared with us earlier this evening, but I think that kind of lays out what our concept is. I don't see our rendering. Do we have the black and white color rendering? But either way, it's, it would be the black and white concept that we're, we're seeing all over the place right now, really in the single-family arena. Does anybody in the meantime have any questions as she's looking for that? Front high, there it is, right there. We're building this currently, this building in Clearwater right now. We start erecting steel next week, right next to Yawburger Cave.
Would these, would these all be private roads on the sides or how would all of that be lined out?
At this point, we would have those be private.
So then would there be an HOA involved?
There would be, yeah. We've got, we've got associations with all of our communities. We manage them all. We have our own property management company.
Mr. Briggs, you had mentioned the apartments obviously being part of a rental project. Were the other units also expected to be rented or were there, was there any mix of ownership? I wasn't clear.
Good question. There is a mix of ownership, and what we would do is we would do it based on demand. So it would be a flex between both. You could rent or you could purchase, either or. We, you know, with the interest rate environment, what would the payment be roughly on a townhome right now around the 262, you know, with current interest rates and association fee? Principal and interest would be around 1,700 a month at 240, you know, if they put 20,000, 20,000. How much would an association fee be roughly?
150 to 175.
150, 175, and then taxes, maybe another 200, maybe? Yeah. What would your forecast be on your perform on your, you know, your sales price of paying a couple hundred a month, maybe? Yeah. So 2200, 2300, right, probably right in that area, roughly. So it would either be, if you were in a situation where you wanted to purchase at that payment, you know, and own, you could, or you could rent, your rent would be a little bit less than that, under, under 2,000 a month.
And that would vary between the tiny homes or the townhomes?
Yeah, that would be for a patio home.
Those would be the, okay.
You know, a tiny... You know, a tiny home's going to be somewhere around 1,000, you know, 1,100. The challenge today is, you know, I was just up at the, the restaurant in town before I came here and I was talking to Megan, and I was just asking her her opinion on the community and what the community is, is in need of, is just thirsting for. And right away, she said rental. And I said, well, how about townhomes? Because we also build townhomes. And she said, well, there's two communities right now, or two projects of townhome projects that are already in the process. And I don't know exactly what stage they're in, but they started a couple, three years ago, she said. She pointed this way, whatever that meant. And so she said to me that townhomes are great, but she said, you know, one of the things is, you know, we have, of course, the elementary school here, but we're not so sure at this point if we'll have a middle school and a high school here. So, you know, three, four-bedroom options today, you know, maybe after a project like this gets put up, you know, something like this where you have 90 or 150 units, then you start to have that transition into purchasing, you know, having kids or, you know, that, that transition in that cycle. So that's why we, for us, we just weren't comfortable taking on that many townhome units based on those parameters and the feedback that we've received from, from the community. So the rental, the rental market is definitely. I went over and stopped at one of the other apartments and I asked him, and he just laughed at me. He said, I could rent this out for three times when I'm paying for it right now. He said, there's nothing. We get people coming in here all the time, and there's just nothing here for us. And so it made me just really reassure my, my thought on doing two buildings right in the beginning, you know, two 90-unit buildings right in the beginning to serve the demand. And I asked Megan, I said, would this help you with staffing? She said, anything would help us with staffing. So.
Would this fishing pond, would that be something open to the rest of the community or something that would just be for this area?
It would be open for the rest of the community, but it'd have to be scheduled. And it would have to be like through an organization, whether it's, you know, Boys and Girls Club, a senior community, you know, VFW, some type of association would need to lead that. But it would be gated and secured, and it'd be about 15 feet deep. We'd stock sunnies and bass. And it's, it's really about, it's about the youth. Having time with your grandkids, you know, kids in the community, and just sharing that experience.
Were you also wanting a TIF district, if I was remembering correctly?
Not for the entire project. In the apartment buildings, it would be yes. You know, right away, we'd get going with those two 90 units.
For the Affordable Housing TIF?
Yeah.
The orange circles and stuff, that's the, the berm out there between that and the highway, correct? At the very top?
Yes, it is.
That would stay there?
That would stay there, but then on top of that, we would put Blue Colorado, stay glimmer across, across it with two and four-inch rip ramp, just to create that three-story buffer that we look for down any of our high-visibility locations like that. We'd probably leave the entrance opened up a little bit here, just in case we had a little scooters drive-through or something going there after we were all built out, you know? But yeah, that would be the primary buffering right there, and then over on the left too. What I like about this plan is it's adaptable, because we're all, I mean, all of us today are just so unsure of interest rates in the political arena, and where are we going? You know, everybody seems to just ask the same question, where are we going? And none of us really truly know. Everybody's kind of got a different opinion. You know, some say rates are going to go up in the spring, some say they're going down. Chief economist at US Bank says they're going down. Chief economist at Wells Fargo says they're going up, you know? So I like the fact that we can adapt as that environment can change. And we know there's just a significant pent-up demand here as it currently is with our comprehensive plan.
When would you look at getting started on this project?
We would get started on it right away. You know, in reference to getting all of our, our documents sealed up here in 2023, you know, our planning, platting, you know, our DAA development agreement, and start digging. I would be very presumptuous if I said this fall, so I'm going to say this, this spring is when we would be digging. We would dig both buildings at once. We'd dig those two buildings out first. And Outlet B, this could end up just being like in Princeton right now. We're taking our seniors and we're doing a third phase that we start digging on possibly this fall, actually. And we'd probably end up taking our seniors and we're going to build our third phase in Princeton for just them. So I could see this being a senior 55, whether it's congregant or a combination of assistant and memory. But that's why I kind of kept this one out for just that, you know?
And then in Outlet B, you talked about retail?
I left that for like a, any kind of a retail use or light industrial. But again, that could be, in the end, that could be multifamily as well. You know, I figured, you know, once you get the absorption in there of a couple hundred units, then your, your demand will start to surface once your communities are built out. And I say five years. Might be a little bit longer. I mean, it would probably be shorter than that, I should say, but when I say five years, it's, it certainly would be double in five years.
With the open outlots, would there be openness to potentially somebody bringing in, you know, some sort of daycare facility? Or is that something that has been looked at or talked about potentially with the open areas?
It, it was something we talked about. Actually, I was at the Mobile Home Park about an hour ago, and that's got 120 units. And I asked her, what does the city need? What do you, what do you, what do you believe we're missing? I asked three people that about an hour ago, and the one, two of them said a daycare. And so that's why I left that retail, where it's coffee, daycare, or, you know, any kind of a retail use for that. Seems like that's always a challenge, you know? And one of the things that our community in Princeton is a lot of our seniors just volunteer to take care of. They love to be in an interactive community. And they're, they're establishing friendships right now where they're starting to watch the kids of some of our clients. And they're doing it per bono, because they just, they're seniors and they're enjoying that, and that's what they want to do, you know? So it's something like that, I could see a senior being a part of that, that type of use in volunteering and helping, along with the fishing pond as well. We're doing a fishing pond in Elk River too, and right next to the Boys and Girls Club. And, and that's their, that's their, actually their mission statement, get hooked on fishing, not on drugs. And so, and so, so we already built 40 units there, and we have another 160 to go. And, and we had three people sign up in the first building for being volunteer. Actually, they were fighting over, you know, to be the one that would be in charge of the fishing pond, because then they get to go, you know, and our goal is to get one-pound sunnies, so they can get that experience of what that's like to have that fish on, you know? And, I mean, once you get that fever, it just keeps you coming back for more. I just, I got a 23-inch walleye over the weekend, and I've been, I've been working two years to get that guy. So yeah, so that's, you know, we'd have little boat races and stuff like that, and we've kind of got a whole menu laid out for that. But that's, that's what excites me about this project.
So the one thing that I'm thinking, I mean, I like the idea of the retail area and outlaw, outlaw, ah, Outlet A. It's hard to say. I do see an issue where there, if we were to, you know, eventually grow to that point where we put in a coffee shop or a daycare. I, I see traffic being a concern. But I mean, again, I like the idea of the retail area. It's really only one way out of there, one way in.
Yeah, I understand, you know, what's your, you know, you know, the thought of that always causes someone to pause. And then I look at, you know, I was just in Big Lake, and they have a daycare right on Highway 10, and it's been there for, boy, 15 years, right by the Friendly Buffalo. And then one of those charter schools just went in on Elk River, right on Highway 10. And then they did buffering, and then they did a fenced-in area. And I saw another one in Elk River that was in a parking lot on an end cap of a strip mall, a daycare that was fenced in around it. So, you know, I think there's some safety measures and some, some precautionary instruments out there that can be used for that, you know, for that use. But it, it definitely comes to my mind too, you know, when you're along a highway.
I don't have any other questions? Questions? No? Okay.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, for coming in today, and we really appreciate it. Very much. Should we take a short recess?
Yes, let's take a short recess.